Back off again now.
Alright guys, it's seven o'clock. Let's, as usual, stick to the closest timeframe possible. So the first Zoom meeting, now this is being recorded, so the first time a town hall is being recorded. And I hope that's okay. We haven't done that before, just because it was supposed to be an informal process, but I thought, what the heck? We could try recording and seeing if it's interesting for people to view these after the fact, but I wanted people to know that unlike the previous ones, this one is being recorded. So for those who have not been on one of these calls before, if you move your cursor, you should see a toolbar come up on the bottom of the screen and the participants' logo on the bottom. If you click on that, that will bring up a menu on the side of your screen, and at the bottom of that menu is the raise your hand icon. That is the best way in these Zoom meetings for us to be able to have people be able to speak so that we're not talking over top of each other and having the mics cancel each other out. And what I'll do is I'll moderate just based on the order of the hands being raised for questions and comments throughout. And we'll just continue to go until people, as usual, run out of questions and comments. So I will leave the floor to whoever wants to ask the first question or make the first comment and open up the conversation. And to Rob's point earlier, it's nice if you put your camera on because we're used to being able to see each other in this. Rob, you had your hand up first, go ahead.
Just a point, Neil, that I found out that if you actually have your microphone muted, if you actually just press down on the spacebar, you can talk, you don't have to go back and unmute it, mute it again all the time. Suppose... So can you hear me now?
Yeah, you are on a Mac. It might not work the same for everybody, but that's good to know.
Okay. Anyway, I don't know, maybe somebody can tell us if it works on an Android device.
Alright, well, let's have everybody file that away as we have more people lock in and we'll see as we get going if there's any other challenges. John Snell, you are first up on the non-technical side unless you have any other advice you want to offer on how to get the computers to work better. Oh, we had you there, John. You're there? Yeah, nope, you stopped again. Click it once. Hello? We can't hear you, John. Alright, John, you did it.
Okay, you can hear me now?
We got you now, you bet.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to chat. A couple of issues, and these really are perspective from somebody that lives on Main Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Perfect, okay. And as I say, it relates to those of us that live on Main Avenue. And a little bit on the parking side, I think most of, we're fortunate on a Main Avenue that we don't really have a street parking issue. Most of us have ample driveways. So that side doesn't really concern us. What does concern us on Main Avenue is the number of people that come into the village, and then actually when they come to exit the village, they actually take Main Avenue thinking it's the way to Port Moody. And I think Ian Devlin has actually sat and done a traffic count on many occasions, and it will be several an hour that we'll go flying up Main Avenue thinking it's the way out of the village, and of course, it's a very quiet street with kids playing. They get up to the top of the street, they're frustrated because it's a dead end. If they're bikers, they will generally stop and have a cigarette and chuck their butt into the end of the road. Then they come flying down that hill from the end of Main Avenue, they're doing about sixty or seventy clicks past our house in absolute, horrified because they've taken a wrong turn, and then they come to the end of Main Avenue, take a right turn and leave. So I thought about it long and hard, and although parking is the main issue, I think if we did have permit-only parking in the village during the peak times of the year, that would certainly help us residents of Main Avenue. We've been protesting the amount of traffic that does come up Main Avenue in error for years and years and years, and as you can see by the proliferation of signs at the end of our streets, it really doesn't make, doesn't seem to, it has made a difference, but not enough. So that's all I'd like to add on that particular point. One other issue I would raise is a safety issue. And again, anybody that lives on Main Avenue and then has to take that very sharp right-hand turn onto Bedwell Bay Road knows they have to cross the median and get around the corner. If you've got a large vehicle, then it is quite hazardous because sometimes you have to back and fill to make the turn, and you're at the mercy of people that are pounding down in either direction while in excess of the speed limit. So that is a dangerous corner. Now, for somebody, I have a motorhome, and the only way, I cannot negotiate a right turn out of Main Avenue onto Bedwell Bay Road there. I have to go down into the village and make a turn in the village. Now, when Midden Road was open, I was able to go right round, do a loop around Midden Road, and then come out of the village that way. I can no longer do that. So what I have to do now is I have to drive down to the fire hall. I drive up the fire hall road, and then I have to back into the oncoming traffic. Now, if someone hits me, they're hit in the back of the vehicle, they're not going to hit me, so that's not so bad. But the visibility there is quite good, so I'm really, you know, it's a leap of faith when I do leave the, when I do do back out onto the road from the fire hall. I've got my hazard flashes going, and I, there's plenty of visibility either way, so anybody traveling at a reasonable speed can see me and do an emergency stop if I'm in the way, but it's just a little bit of a safety concern there. I don't like doing it, it's the only way I can make a turn in the village. So I'm just gonna pass that comment on, thank you.
No worries, good comments. There is, just on your first part about the traffic going up Main Street, there is a sign as you're going down Bedwell Bay Road that says "Port Moody to the left." In fact, I think there's two signs on the same sign pole.
Absolutely, yes.
And if that's not enough to get people, I'm not sure what a preferred solution would be, but staff are constantly receiving emails and receiving phone conversations or having phone conversations, soliciting feedback for how signage can be improved. So if you have ideas about how to improve the signage in that regard, please send them into Lorna, and they are changing as a result of that feedback. And so if you got a better idea for how to manage that or if anybody else does, please send them into Lorna, because you're right, I was aware of it being a problem before, I didn't realize it was still such a big deal with those signs there.
Well, one of the issues was that a lot of the early GPS mapping systems shows the exit from the village actually through Main Avenue, so in the past, what would happen, anybody going to the park would follow their GPS and go into the park and park where they should do, but at the end of the day, there was so much congestion and traffic trying to leave the park that they would actually open that yellow barrier, and then you had people that were leaving the village via a different route from when they came in, so that added to the problem. So I mean, short of putting speed bumps on Main Avenue and short of putting an absolute white line right across the end of Main Avenue, there is no white line there. That could possibly help, so I'll certainly put that suggestion forward if council's receptive to making those changes.
That's not even a big policy change, that's just something you can send to Lorna, and Lorna can review with the team, and what will happen typically is you either have satisfactory experience from staff responding, or if you find that they don't support what you're asking for, you're welcome to bring it more formally to me if you like, and we can have a conversation once staff have not met your expectations.
There's been several attempts, we've all made suggestions, and they've all been followed, and it still seems to be, unless we start putting signs in different languages and I, you know, I'm not sure, you know, what we can do. I mean, we're in contravention of some of the road signs anyway, apparently you can only put a warning sign on certain sides of the road in the direction of travel, so there are certain restrictions, and your guys have bent a few of them to try and accommodate us, so there's no lack of trying on the villagers' part to make it safer. Thank you.
No worries, but keep the ideas coming. And then on your second point about turning around, the only thing I can offer, which I don't think is going to be relevant since you've got a trailer, is when driving the big fire truck, engine three, and if we respond from the hull and have to go down Kelly Road, we actually have to go past Kelly Road and make the turn at the actual mailboxes, and we can't even pull apart, we have to, it's really kind of embarrassing, we, sometimes we'll actually turn off the sirens because we're going two kilometers now around this thing and then backing up to make the rest of the way around. I don't know if that's big enough to, for you to be able to use as a turning circle without Midden Road, but I just wanted to at least get it on your radar if you haven't watched the fire truck. Try to get down Kelly, that's the way, that's the turnaround area for the fire truck.
Well, that's right, and of course, in my case, I'm already, I'm at the wrong end of Kelly, I'm sort of leaving the village, so I'm pointing the wrong way, whereas Kelly Kelly points the other way.
I'm just thinking about the turnaround at the mailboxes, it might not be on the right side for you, it's the only other thing I can offer as an idea for a turnaround.
Yeah, I tried that on a smaller RV, and it's a little bit tight, and again, if someone is coming through the village at a rate, a high rate of speed, then it's I'm blocking the road for too long for safety purposes. The fire hall is the best one because people can, you know, can see me a long way off.
Great, it's a great point. I wish I had a better answer for you at this point, sorry.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
No worries. Dave Goodman, I modified your name, by the way, so we didn't have to look at your equipment. Dave?
Yes, thank you, I just unmuted. I have just a couple quick comments and then a matter I'd like a bit of discussion on. So the first comment is with respect to the road ends, two individuals that live adjacent to two separate waterfront lots, which I assume are on the list of the three, have indicated that they feel like they're being forced to buy those lots because they want to preserve their views and they don't want to see any development there. So I wonder if you, with your unbelievable manner of persuading people, could persuade them to make a tax-deductible contribution to the village, a substantive one, in exchange for those lots being preserved in perpetuity in their natural state. But I leave that with you to think about, but maybe you could get a couple million dollar donation from each of them.
Can I, well, this is worth, let's just talk it, let's talk it through, because this is what the town halls are for, is to have the conversation. If I, so the idea is that being responsible for the village, that fair market values were cooped for each of the assets. And so if someone was looking at providing a tax-receivable donation for the same value as the property, I would expect they'd probably have the property, and they prefer to have the property because it's an appreciating asset rather than the tax receipt. What are your thoughts? Are you thinking they donate less than the property value?
Sure, because they could donate less, and then the village will still own those sites, which was the original intent. You'd avoid the hassle of trying to sell a site which you're not supposed to sell anyway. And, you know, it's basically going to be free money. It might not be as much as you think you might get with a lot of problems, some initial upside costs to get it going, so it's just, I thought it was worth considering. It might be rejected out of hand, I don't know.
No, not at all. Anything that provides money to the village is an important consideration. If we had people donate enough money that we didn't have to sell road ends, why wouldn't we do that? Of course we would.
Okay, the second point?
Yep.
And this goes back to the meeting before last, you might remember my comments at the very end, which I think you've either you either misinterpreted or totally were dismissive of, but it was with respect to the conduct of the meeting, and to go over it in case some people missed it, I suggested that once a motion is made and seconded, that motion now belongs to the committee, and all members of the committee, so the council and the mayor, then should be taking turns, if they so choose, to speak to that motion. What I find is that if you tend to want to comment on every councillor's comment rather than waiting your turn to speak to the motion, at that time, you'd have ample opportunity to correct them if you thought they were misinformed or to voice your own opinion. So that was, I'd like you to reconsider that in terms of the normal conduct of a meeting, and I'll also, again, acknowledge, and I think it's great that you're letting, after all the councillors have had their second round or if necessary, their third round, that you open it up to the residents, and I think that's great.
As I said before, and I didn't dismiss it, as I said, it's noted. I think what you're misinterpreting is my comments are not typically comments that have a position attached to them, it's only background, and I do wait for my turn, aside from using background till the appropriate time. And the other piece is that I encourage you to watch other municipalities and large organizations as how they run their meetings, and you'll find that the benefit of being a mayor or a chair of any committee is that it is absolutely up to your prerogative to comment whenever you like, you are running the meeting. And I would highly encourage you, because I'm not going to be mayor again, to set a great example yourself, if you'd like to run for mayor, to run the actual meetings differently yourself.
The third point, which I hope would generate some discussion, is with respect to the OCP. You might remember, I think it was back in September, or long before there was even a nomination period for the OCP, I suggested that council, rather than simply having five, seeking nominations for five people and then having a vote, that you open up the meeting to, or the committee to more people, and that while the vote for those members might give you the council some guidance, but that really, the council should take responsibility to ensure that there's gender balance, balance in terms of new residents versus old residents, and also importantly, balance with respect to particular views, so that that committee doesn't come in as a very biased committee. What I would suggest at this point is, given that nothing has been done other than a call for nominations, and given that considerable time has elapsed from then, and it doesn't look like that committee will be set anytime soon because of, you wanted to have a vote, that you start all over again and reconsider those initial comments that I made. In other words, call for nominations, but also consider what the role of council should be in setting that committee.
So in no particular order, yes, we are considering starting a call for nominations again as opposed to going with the ones that were previously done. And the nomination period would happen in advance of us being able to hold an election again, so in order to maintain the momentum and ensure timeliness, we've been holding the nominations closer to the eventual election. You misunderstand the election process because as part of the nomination, every person on the, who is being nominated has to declare their own biases and opinions. And the council, after the election, has a chance to review the basis of the individuals or the weighting of the individuals and their biases who are elected, and if council determines that there is a bias towards one opinion being reflected, then council has the opportunity to intervene and switch out or change the results of the election. We did not need to do that for any of the previous committees. And we had no complaints on any of the committees about how well they functioned and about any kind of bias associated with them. So I'd say, after that, we're five for five of the process. And more importantly, by not choosing the people to go on the committees ourselves, it ensures that it's 100% democratic and no one from council, especially not me, I don't even attend the election, there's no way that I can influence a directive that I get accused of doing all the time. Elections are democratic and they ensure that the people, the people, the residents who are voting are choosing the biases to be represented, and it's worked like a dream. Alright. Next on our list is Ben. Ben, we don't have a last name for you. Ben? Going once. Going twice. Alright, we'll come back to Ben. Bruce, you're up. Ben, it sounds like you have multiple computers on, which you can't do for Zoom, you can only have one computer on for Zoom. Sort of. What's your last name, Ben? Okay, go ahead, Ben.
Thank you so much. First of all, I would like to thank you for being very generous with time allocated to each participant.
Don't worry about the pleasantries, let's just have conversation.
Thank you. Yesterday, we were asked to send our general questions about group warfish applications privately to the staff instead of asking them at the council meeting. Thus, we put our questions in an email and sent them to the staff last night. But this afternoon, we received a shocking response, which can be summarized in a few words. The village has no bylaws, no policies, and no procedures for group application. How could this be true? What happened to the bylaw 411, policy 205, and the definition and the rights of the upland owner within them? Are they just for show? Or for misrepresentation to the public that the village cares about residents and their rights? What are we paying taxes for when there is no law and order in our village? Isn't it better to join another municipality that has law and order? If there is no bylaw, there is no policy, there is no procedure, how does the village resolve issues that come up about group warfishes? The use of the group warfish facilities on Marine Avenue has had a significant negative impact on the privacy, parking, safety, and security of the immediate upland properties located in a very quiet and secluded area of Marine Avenue. This is why bylaw 411 has required the Warfish Association to reserve a membership for their upland owners. This is common sense, and I do not see it in any other way. How could residents of the immediate upland properties?
Ben, can I get you to get to your question, because this is a town hall for conversation, it's not a forum for ranting.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. As I said earlier, I thank you for your generosity with the timing for the other participants, so I appreciate if I'm not interrupting or answering my question. My question continues, how could the residents of the immediate upland properties not have access to the warfish in front of their property while those who are not residents of Marine Avenue be provided access and cause significant disturbance and inconveniences to the upland owners such as ourselves? Only could I do an explanation why immediate upland owners would agree?
I think I got your question, Ben, I think I got your question the first time. You know, I think you finished your first question, didn't you? You said, how can the upland owners not have or have a dock going across their property from someone else?
That wasn't my question, Your Honor. My question was, how this bylaw 411, as you know, as the village knows, has required warfish associations on Marine Avenue to reserve the membership officially for the residential upland owner of their dock?
What's your question, Ben?
The question is, how could the residents of the immediate upland property, such as our property, not have access to the warfish in front of their property, which is, for our example, that would be Drew's Warfish, while those who are not residents of Marine Avenue be provided access and cause significant disturbances and inconveniences to the upland owners such as ourselves? That is my question.
Alright. Ben, let me answer, Ben, please. Let me, I can't, I have no idea how it could possibly be that a wharf would go across someone else's property and they wouldn't have access to the wharf itself. I think it's ridiculous, and I don't know how it happened, nor do I know what can be done about it. But I agree with you that there's no way that anybody who should be the upland owner should not have access to a dock in front of their house.
I appreciate your agreement, Your Honor, but I would love to know what happened. So now, knowing that you agree with me, how can we fix the issue? Do we have a special path?
As I said, as Lorna said last night, I have a little bit more agreement with the ports.
But, Your Honor, the village, the village bylaw 411 clearly states that the consent of the village is required for any warfish that is being dealt in Marine Avenue. The port has not, the port has obviously clearly responded that the consent that bylaw 411, the village is responsible for, not the ports. The village must enforce bylaw 411. I am, my question is, why bylaw 411 is not being enforced? What's the purpose of bylaw 411? That's my question. If the bylaw 411 is a bylaw, it's a law, law needs to be followed.
We don't have a good connection, Ben, we don't have a good connection. I don't believe that it's possible that a bylaw wouldn't be being enforced, so I would encourage you to connect with staff. If staff says there is no bylaw, as you referenced earlier, then the bylaw that you're referring to either doesn't exist or there's a disagreement. I'm happy to get involved, but I don't think we need to have this conversation in front of everybody.
Your Honor, Your Honor, You and I both know that bylaw 411 exists. I can, if you like, I can, you can share, I can share my opinion.
Ben, this isn't, Ben, this isn't the place to debate your personal challenge with the wharfs. I've already told you that I agree, I don't know how it could have happened. I'm happy to support you as well as you have conversations with staff, but this isn't the forum to have a specific dedicated one resident conversation about a challenge that you've got. I've answered the question to the best of my ability in that I don't have any answers about the bylaws, I agree in concept with you, and I'm happy to work with you more with staff. So let's go to the next person.
Your Honor, you haven't, Your Honor, may I, you muted me.
I did, Ben, it's time to let someone else talk, Ben.
Your Honor, John Snell, who is one of the historic access in front of our property, John Snell has a membership in dock adjacent to Drew's Warfish in front of our property. And he was talking about parking issues in Main Avenue, which is actually a remote a remote street compared to Marine Avenue, which is very crowded with all these warfish users. He discussed for 10 minutes about the issues he had with parking in Main Avenue. He was supposed to ignore, how could we ignore the issues of parking in Marine Avenue? How come we are putting the parking signs everywhere except Marine Avenue? The reason is clear. This is issues inherited from previous councils, the elected new councils to be impartial, to be equipped, basically to give equal rights to all residents, not just everyone.
Ben, I'm not sure if you're aware of how you've hijacked this town hall. This is a conversation around policy, the Marine Ave parking was addressed about everybody on Marine Avenue. It wasn't just about your personal dock challenges. So I'm gonna move on to the next person, and we can have that conversation as I've already offered to you offline, and we can use these town halls as they're meant to be done as a group conversational piece.
My questions were not asked.
I'm sorry, Ben, you've had your chance, I'm moving on, we've had, I think, three questions and it's 7:30. Okay, so we're gonna move on. John, if you would like to go next. Alright, we're not hearing anything from John, I don't have any other hands up, is there anybody else after John?
Neil, it's Bruce.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just about to start a few minutes ago. Just first on John Snell's comment, appreciate- I appreciate there have been efforts made, and I appreciate the problem John's describing. There have been a number of signs put in. I don't know how effective they are, but it just occurs to me that maybe, added to the plethora we have there, a no exit sign might make the point to people that this is not a through road. I don't know. I appreciate how frustrating it is for...
It's a very good question. If we don't have a no exit sign there already, which I'm just not sure. I don't look that way.
We may well have one, but I don't know, dead end, no exit, and maybe even some kind of unusual line pattern on the road, as John alludes to. Appreciate it. It's just a very difficult area to get people's attention and direct them down the hill.
Good ideas. We've tried other signage for Coombe Lane similarly as well, and we may have learned some stuff that may have worked at Coombe Lane that we could use for Main Ave.
Secondly, on the matter of committee selection, I have to agree. I think the process that's been used has worked reasonably well. I mean, I can't point to any serious problems that it's introduced. And just a reminder that ultimately, all these issues come back to council. These are just sources of information, guidance, recommendations. It ultimately, as council, has to decide what steps it wants to take. And finally, I just wanted to say personally, I don't find the approach you use in terms of exchanges at all a problem. You're always open to inputs, and the fact that you may want to make a comment in process, that's well within the range of normal behavior for a mayor. And I agree with your point that you're actually less intrusive than most mayors are. They have the right to manage and direct the meetings.
I appreciate the perspective. I don't want to dismiss Steve Goodman's comments. I'm not dismissing them. I'm aware of them when I do speak. As I said, I do my very best to only add background or facts as opposed to commentary or my own perspective as much as possible until it's a specific time. So it's not wasted comments from David Goodman, but I appreciate your perspective. Not too bad.
Yeah, I would add, you know, anyone attending council meeting recognizes, we don't always agree, but that's the nature of councils. That's what they're supposed to do.
Agreed. And one of the things that I really focus on is making sure that we have all of the conversations happening in council rather than outside of council and just push through things where there's 100% agreement, not have the conversations that people understand where each of us feel are strengths and weaknesses of anything we're debating also. I think there's a real value in having those conversations in front of residents, allowing them to influence us at the time. That's why I'd like to have as much feedback as possible. All right.
Hello, can you hear me now?
John, we can hear you.
Thank you so much.
John, what's your last name?
Thank you. This is John Shulastani from 376 to Marine Avenue.
All right, John, I hope you have something new to ask. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to ask my questions and concerns that I have personally. Thank you.
Are you going to ask?
You know, the former Mayor Raf Dru is our immediate neighbor. He has placed a warfage fronting our property, occupying the space of two group warfages fronting our property. What steps does our group warfage association need to take to ensure the location of the dock of Drew's Warfage Association does not impede our group warfage association? This is my first question, and I have a follow-up question.
Okay, great question. I don't know. You'll need to work with staff to understand your options.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
All right, I'll repeat. I don't know the answer. You'll need to work with staff and possibly the port to understand better what your options are, but I don't know them.
Thank you. As directed yesterday, we sent an email to the staff. The staff responded today that there is no bylaw and nothing we can do. I wondered, how did you approve the warfage application of our neighbor when the village sent that application to the port?
Did you really just ask me how did I approve the village application? I think he's had his dock for 35 years.
Okay, I'm going to rephrase my question. I am so sorry. My question was, when the village pre-approved the warfage fronting our property, and in 2008, the neighbor was allowed to increase the warfage size and also add additional fingers, three fingers, to the group warfage, why they did not place a public meeting in 2008 when there was a bylaw, why it was allowed to go ahead? And now, what the current council is going to do about this error made? Because we want to make an application for a group warfage fronting our property to allow six more residences, because right now, the group warfage is occupying two group-sized warfages fronting our property, does not allow additional group warfage to be placed. What does the village going to do with respect to the mistake made by the former mayor?
I don't know. That's why I say you need to work with staff, and I'm happy to support.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the staff has not responded. I'll go to my next question. We asked the village staff what the current zoning of the foreshore fronting our property at 37662 Marine Avenue is. The village staff has refused to answer again. Would the council please answer this question?
No, this is not a council meeting. John, it's very clear. This is a town hall for conversation. There's nothing formal, and council are not required to answer any questions by design. This is a conversation where it's a Q and A, and I'll answer any questions that I can and support going forward.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to refresh my question. Can we ensure that the staff answer these simple questions when the residents ask them? For example, what is the current zoning in the foreshore of our property?
If you send an email to me and include the email on me to Lorna that you ask, I will follow up with Lorna and try to get a better understanding of what the history is so that I can provide a proper comment.
I appreciate that, and my follow-up question is that, yesterday in the council meeting, it was told that the village will be holding two council meetings to deal with any OCP amendment required for the warfage applications. How can we ensure that any amendment needed for our group warfage application will be dealt with and resolved in the first council meeting?
You can't. It's a council meeting that covers everything for the village, and we'll be making our decisions based on input from council, input from residents, and we'll do what's best for the village.
So as a resident, how can we provide our consent regarding our issue? Because we are applying for a group warfage fronting our property.
If you write a letter, you can have a letter put on our agenda to ensure that at least it's gone on the agenda publicly. And like I've already explained, you have to work with staff through all these different applications. Staff are the ones who are responsible for all the doing. Council is responsible for policy.
Thank you. So I would appreciate again that, please, staff be directed to answer residences and accept their letters and emails. So far, they have been on the response if it's with respect to the question asked. Thank you.
You're welcome. And David, you are up again. And please, I request that you will be a little bit more... You'll listen a little bit more to the responses, please. Go ahead with your question.
Hi, John. This is David. I haven't asked a question yet. I don't know what you're referring to.
Oh, I thought it was the other David. So what's your last name, David?
I'm Shulastani as well.
So you can see why I thought you were the first David.
No, that's why I put S H on it. I have a question regarding the... You know, when you're entering Belkara, you guys have a signage put out by the city of Port Moody regarding the stating that there's local traffic only.
No, that's incorrect. That signage was put up by Metro Vancouver.
That's what I'm saying, by Metro Vancouver, Port Moody, whichever one. So is that not the case? Is it not local traffic only? Or were they just doing that to deter the parking?
Metro Vancouver put the sign up to deter the parking and traffic through Belkara to Belkara Park.
Okay. And the question in regards to that, so should we contact... Because there's a lot of external residences that are not from Belkara that are, you know, parking and making a dangerous access for people driving down. Sometimes their pets run across the street and whatnot when they're fast-moving based on the speed limit, of course, vehicles going down the road. Should we be contacting Metro Vancouver regarding those?
No, call the non-emergency RCMP line. They're the ones who are responsible for enforcing bylaw infractions on the roads.
So it's not the Port Moody bylaw officers?
No, call the RCMP non-emergency line.
Okay, for sure. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
No problem. Deborah?
Oh, good, I'm unmuted. Thank you. I think today I called in or sent a message, and Lisa may have to do with people down on the berm again today. There was a group of about six. So I don't know what happened. Lisa was asking me if DFO showed up, but I was out working today, so I don't know. This evening, again, at 5:00 to 7:00, there were four cars illegally parked down by the park. So I don't know if council staff are considering changing the hours of the bylaw person so that she is working... Because there's probably no need to be ticketing people parking at 10:00 a.m. or 10:30 a.m., but as the evenings go on, there are more people illegally parking, especially because they know that there's nobody working bylaws after hours.
So a couple of points. They have modified Shay's hours. I don't think that she can come in too late because she's also responsible for getting the ward's bins compressed. And so they have filled up. I understand they re-fulled yesterday completely, and people were to be getting turned away yesterday. So she does have to be in early enough to be able to push the buttons on the bins at the ward. But your point about the end of day, I go back to the Coquitlam Towing. Call Coquitlam Towing. Well, some of them can ticket. I didn't realize that not all of them can yet. Some of them can ticket and I've called the owner of Coquitlam Towing, and I've made it very clear to the owner that residents in Belkara are not knuckleheads, sending him out on false goose chases, and that there are legit concerns when someone from Belkara calls about illegal parking. And he said he agrees, accepts, and will enforce based on phone calls. So call the Coquitlam Towing number, and I believe that's even on the website. And call and just get them to come out, and they will make a statement by virtue of the towing of those vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. I highly encourage Coquitlam Towing to try to enforce after hours, especially if you have any concerns. And if you see crowds forming, for example, on a berm or otherwise, call the RCMP, the non-emergency line or the emergency line if you have any concerns whatsoever about safety.
Okay, okay. It's a little bit difficult for me now because of my other... I'm dealing with the RCMP on a different level, so I don't want to be the resident that's phoning who's also staff, right?
I hear you.
Put onto somebody else.
You need to find a stooge.
Yes, that's right. Okay, Peter, it's you.
I didn't use the word stooge with your husband, I promise. All right, the only other hand that we have up is John Shulastani. John, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I have several questions in general, maybe in the interest of public, those who are applying for the group warfages, just in general. My question is whether we should submit our group warfage applications to the village first or the port first?
I don't believe the process is confirmed because the village has only been advised of the process from the port and hasn't modified our own processes to match. I think once the moratorium is lifted, the actual links for the applications will be put up the day the moratorium is lifted, and then there'll be guidance as to how to apply. I expect that for the group warfages, the application will first go to the village. I just can't be certain at this point.
Thank you. So do we have an application that we can fill out?
No, as I said, the day the moratorium is lifted is the day the applications will be released by the port.
Okay, so the application we submit to the village, we are going to get it from the port?
Yes, because ultimately, it's a port application. The village is just going to endorse the group warfage applications in advance of the port accepting them.
So my understanding is that the village does not have an application?
It is a port application that the village has to endorse.
Okay, thank you so much. So there is only one application. And my other question is that... So currently, is there any steps or bylaw we should follow as a prerequisite to OCP amendment?
The village won't be able to accept the applications until the OCP amendment is confirmed in the first place, because that will be part of the process. Okay, so as per the last council meeting yesterday, the village has to do the OCP amendment to confirm the rules that we are going to be accepting or enforcing in advance of the application being approved for the port's consideration. So there is going to be a delay as the village figures out the OCP amendment in advance of the group warfage applications being able to be confirmed and then sent forward to the port.
Thank you. So my question was, is there any policy or bylaw in place which we can follow in order to ensure any errors in the OCP being corrected?
The OCP amendment is the actual bylaw review that we have yet to go through. So that's why we're reviewing it. There's, I believe, 16 bullet points for consideration.
Thank you. May I ask another question?
Yeah, there's no other hands up, so go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, if a bylaw is not complied with, how does the village respond to such violation? Especially if an owner violates the right of his neighbor under that bylaw? Should the victim owner take the village and its neighbor to court for the village failing to enforce the bylaw? Or are there any other mechanisms placed by the village to ensure residences follow the law and the village enforces the law?
As I said before, I'm not aware of a bylaw not being enforced, so I'm happy to get involved, as I said before. I just need to be caught up on what the issues are, but to my knowledge, all the bylaws are enforced.
Okay, just for the benefit of everyone, the former Mayor Raf Dru, our immediate neighbor, to my understanding, has violated bylaw 411 and has not allowed us as the upland owner... Basically, they have not reserved an upland ownership.
John, I can't overstate, this isn't the place for venting or rants. This is a conversational place. And I understand that you're frustrated. I've been very clear that I don't agree with the circumstance. It doesn't make any sense why there should be a dock in front of your place, and I will work with you. But the tone of the complaints and the ranting, this is not the place for it. I'm sorry.
I am so sorry. No, my concern was that then, when we see such a violation, how can we write to the village? Is there a mechanism to complain to the village regarding the bylaw violation, or should we just take the case to court?
Do whatever you feel is best.
So the village has no policy with respect to enforcement, so we can just go to court?
No, we have a policy with respect to enforcement. I've already answered that question about getting me involved. And if you don't like that answer, then you're going to have to make a decision on how to do it yourself.
Okay, no, absolutely. We are going to get your worship involved. Thank you.
Jim Chisholm. Jim, we can't hear you. You're muted. Sheri?
Am I still muted?
No, we got you now, Sheri. Please, go ahead.
The Shulastanis have had a very difficult ride, and I do feel great sympathy for them. And I think there's a lot of things they need to clearly understand, but you guys aren't ready yet because the moratorium is still on Bedwell Bay, and we are waiting for the port. But other than that, the OCP change that was talked about last evening... And Lorna referred to 16 lines in the OCP. But when I looked at the OCP, the 16 lines I believe that she's referring to are things about wastewater and all kinds of things that really don't need to be changed at all. There's really only one line in the OCP that talks about road ends being accessible for water access and beach access. And there's the only line that needs to be changed. And if that can be done by a simple amendment put forward by the council, and I think it takes two meetings to approve it, I'm just wondering if either of the councillors would put that motion up? I mean, we've got Bruce, and we've got Rob here tonight. Are any of them in favor of doing that?
Is it worth me adding just a little bit about the consideration so they can include my comments in?
Sure.
So the port hadn't identified the 16 points that we're talking about right now as the primary area that Belkara should focus on. The port told me when I talked to them last week that the area that Belkara especially needs to focus on... The port told me when I talked to them last week that the area that Belkara especially needs to focus on is the map. And ensuring that the map that the port has proposed is going to be consistent with the map for locations that Belkara would like to open up. So I just want to, so as Bruce and Rob consider your question as well, it sounds like the map is a major point of consideration, which to your point, Sheri, we can absolutely cover in the two meetings.
Good.
And so it's not going to be a big delay, we just require legally to have those two meetings.
Well, the map that I spoke with Lorna today and the schedule, I think it's A2, that was done in, oh gosh, way back when, 2008 or something. It shows all the proposed docks that have not yet been filled. And that's what Lorna is working from. So it looks like there's lots of spots.
Agreed, it's just, as I said, the primary thing of what the village recommended to me that we focus on is aligning the maps, that was it. And so if Lorna feels that those sixteen bullet points are just a quick runover to make sure we're aligned.
Yeah.
The intent. Is to move as quickly as possible, and certainly Bruce and Rob chime in with your opinions as well. But not all at once.
I'll let Rob go first.
I think.
I put my hand up, Neil, you didn't recognize it.
I did, but that was for a question, you were already up there.
As far as docks go, I went through the sustainability study today as well as the OCP. And I think I concur with Sheri that I think right now, it's a little cluttered on what really has to be done at all at this point in time. Nothing has really changed in the sustainability study from 2007, I believe it was. And I think the moratorium went on in 2008. I questioned, I think, the other, at the council meeting, just from the point of view of Bedwell Bay. And it appears that it was open, it wasn't closed, as other areas were, once that sustainability study was done. But Bruce can confirm that, he was around during that time, that's my understanding of it. So I think the issue right now is the documentation on what is required. And whatever concerns the port have, I think there was, somebody made a suggestion that we should meet with somebody from port to find out what the concerns actually are. If there are any at that point in time. The OCP looks like it's the one, Sheri, I think you mixed a couple of things up. The one line was to do with the selling of road ends, where it said that they would have to remain pretty much, I think the gist was in perpetuity for access to water.
Yeah.
That was the one line, I think, in the OCP. The bulk of everything else was in the sustainability study, I believe. And that's where this, you know, there's a lot of items like designated anchorage. There's also launching of carton boats, et cetera, which are not applicable anymore, I guess we could say. As now that area was moved into the park and out of Belkara. But I have one question, this whole thing, that I would love to hear everybody else's comments on. And that is, if we have no parking in the village.
Oh, hey, your hand's up for that, let's let Bruce answer the question about the dock, what we want to parking. Just to ensure Sheri's conversation is continued.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. Look, I'm happy to meet as early as staff are comfortable with doing it. I would like to hear from the port as well, perhaps you can bring them in by Zoom. But I have, I'm widely available at the moment, given conditions. And I can certainly am prepared to respond quickly to an opportunity to review those items. I would defer to staff as to the number of meetings, it doesn't surprise me, there's two, obviously there's a need for public exposure. And I would just add that the sustainability plan that we have there was the basis on which we got some additional group wharves approved. Those that have followed this, I'm sure Sheri's among them, will recall that everything got frozen, right, in terms of shared wharves. Now, environments change, my sense is, from what we've seen from the port at the moment. They're positive on shared wharves, and if only because they appear to be willing to take them ahead of private wharves. And so, back to Sheri's point, maybe there's some flexibility of the port. But they had an agreement that they would honor some additional shared wharves on the basis of the sustainability assessment that was done and the plan that was put into place. So, short answer to you, Sheri, I'm happy to move as quickly as is practical, but I would want to hear from staff and get advice from them.
Sheri, did you want to ask any other questions in that topic? You're muted, you're muted, Sheri? We, you're still muted, Sheri?
There we go, I'm on now.
There you go.
I feel very strongly that I would like to negotiate with the port rather than staff on the new contract for, certainly for Belkara Bay, and hopefully whatever they agreed to, like many years ago. It went to everybody, even neighboring municipalities.
As I said, I'll be there with you when we have the negotiation and we'll do our best. I just try to manage your expectations that they say, I think, I'll get this quote close to correct. We're big, we can take the knocks, just keep blaming us.
Well, no, I'm not blaming anybody, I just feel that I'm probably better at negotiating this because I've been at it a lot longer than most of you.
I'll be there to support you.
Okeydoke. Thank you.
No problem, all right, Rob, this is your chance for parking you were talking about.
There we go, yeah, just a question, if we don't have parking in the village, and I think there's I think there's a number of issues out there with, you know, people coming in to launch kayaks, et cetera. If there's no place to park, essentially, we have a number of access points in the sustainability study that was done along Marine. And if there's no parking for those people, then I don't know how they're going to launch their craft, if you will, or whatever at that point. I also think that there's also, I think, an issue with the water ski club that people are getting dropped off or picked up, or they're parking on Marine and going across. And my understanding on that was that it was a water access only, and that's what the water ski club has been for years. So if there is no parking, should we continue to have access to people that are not from Belkara? Most of the people from Belkara would either, you know, carry their paddle boards down, bring their paddle board, drop it off, take their car back home, et cetera, or park in one of the spots that's village only. So just throw it out there to get people's comments back on that point, thanks.
So Deborah Struck's got her hand up on that, go ahead, Deborah?
Hi, okay, yeah, I think that, obviously, there are people that come along and park there that are kayaking or even going up the arm for the weekend if they can find a spot to park or to the water ski club. And if, we talked about it yesterday, and we know that if we offer parking, and even if people know there's ten spots, we're going to still get three hundred people looking for the ten. Whereas if for people like the water ski club or one that, I think that they should perhaps be a permit only so that the village is actually making money, I don't know, or altogether just saying they can't come. Or the only thing is parking up at the hall, I don't really know. But I think if, because what might end up, and I don't know, does the water ski club have agreements with some of the shared dock owners? I don't know.
It's a good question, the, I will add that in the past, if someone's looking to go up the arm, they're encouraged to park at the village hall, and the village offers a free parking pass for the village hall parking lot.
Yeah.
For the duration that people are planned to be away, so that is always, and I think is intended to continue, I think, be a public area for parking. Yeah, Bruce, I see, did you want to add some history on that?
Yeah, no, just a comment, because I know Lisa's not on the call, and I know she is very familiar with the, particularly the water ski club issue. And I think it's one example of a number of issues that are now going to become evident, right? As we try to implement this permit-only parking approach. And I just wanted to say, Lisa would be, I think, strongly in favor of allowing access for the water ski people. And then, but, I mean, I can't speak for her, I just know it's something that was of concern to her, and has been in the past.
Yeah, it's a good point, and I have, I believe, received two separate complaints about people dropping off, not specific to the water ski club, but on Marine Ave, the traffic now, people getting dropped off in front of the homes on Marine Ave is, and I think in the last week to ten days, I've received two complaints as well. So I think people are starting to really feel it, and it's going to be, it's going to be a tough conversation.
Yeah, yeah, well, once this decision was made, we're going to trigger a few of those. And, well, it just has to be dealt with, there's no way around it.
Agreed, Peter, you're up next, are you continuing the part about the parking? You're just, it's okay, there you go.
Yeah, no, just about the water ski club, a lot of the, a lot of the dock owners bring down members of the water ski club to their docks, and then they, so they don't have a vehicle parked on the street.
Yeah, it makes sense, if they want to park at someone's house, they can be driven down as well, as some form of carpooling. I don't think it's going to be as convenient as it is now, to your point, though.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, it'll be interesting, Deborah, you've got your hand up again on this?
So I don't know if there's anything in policy to do with, do we owe it to the water ski club? And maybe Peter can speak more to what the need is and historically what was there? And if maybe that there needs to be some sort of policy and a clear ruling? Because I guess back in the day when it started, did everybody have to come from the park dock or from North Vancouver? I don't know the answers, maybe Peter Boquet does, thanks.
Peter, no, Peter's shaking his head. The, you know, council is going to come back with the report, and we'll be able to ask some more questions. Peter, did you want to add anything? I apologize, I saw you were muted and shaking your head, I assumed you weren't going to talk on it.
Oh no, I was just going to say, no, I don't know the total history, we've been down at the dock there, we've had our dock now for, I don't know, I think it's five years now, six years now. And I've always witnessed ski club members coming down with the dock owners, and then the dock owners would take them over to the ski club.
Right, yeah, fair enough.
So there shouldn't be a parking issue then?
Well, that's, as I said, the complaints from the two separate residences on Marine recently were about the traffic for dropping off, not about parking. I think we're going to find people are going to be upset no matter what, but, yeah, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, speaking of upset, I just got to mention one other anomaly that I know we'll probably hear from Carolene on, which is the, you know, as you get down close to Whiskey Cove area, that small environment there is an area where divers have, for years, used that. And so that's another example, we may have to decide, you know, how do you deal with it? Because I'm told, I don't know, and I'm sure you'll hear other opinions, but that they've always been respectful and, in fact, have helped to limit improper parking in the area. But having said that, we also have to question, you know, how do you deal with those people who for years have been using that spot for scuba diving?
Yeah, some history on that, Bruce, it's a good point, we talked about it a little bit. And one of the proposals that had been discussed was divers have the ability to get a pass, a diving pass from the village hall. And that served two purposes, it allowed us to track the divers in case there was ever an accident, if they didn't return to their cars. We knew that they were divers, and it was a potential safety benefit as well.
Sure.
And it wasn't planned to be a fee associated, it was planned to be more about tracking specifically for diver's safety.
Right.
It's a good point, and needs to be discussed more as well.
Yeah, I mean, some of these, these very small ones, I think we should look positively upon them, because, I mean, if they for years haven't been a problem, then I would want to be in favor, but again, you're the one that's going to hear from the neighbors.
It's such a wonderful day every time my phone rings. Deborah, go ahead, please.
So I'm just wondering, in terms of the dock owners, and I don't know if there's several shared dock owners or who helps the water ski club, so is there any remuneration between the water ski club and the shared dock owners? Is that something within the, I think, is there a society to do with the shared docks? And do they have rulings to do with that, like, is that a whole other can of worms?
Well, I don't know, Peter, do you want to comment? I think you're the most experienced.
Oh, yeah, I don't think so, but anyways, no, like with our dock, nobody's allowed on the dock if there's not a shared owner on the dock. Okay, you have to have permission to come to the dock, that's why, all the docks are locked. Nobody has keys except the dock owners. And if we, like if Nora and I want to bring somebody to the dock, we have to get permission from the rest of the dock owners. And it goes without saying for all the other shared docks. You know, and with the ski club, the ski club has to have permission from the dock owners of that dock that takes them to the club.
And everybody gets an email.
And everybody gets an email.
Yeah, yeah, we get an email from.
Lisa.
Well, Lisa or Sue Brain usually, who's emailed Lisa. And the call goes out that the water ski club would like to bring some equipment over, or whatever it is. And is anyone opposed to it? And they give us a date, so say Saturday at one o'clock. And then the email goes out to all of us, and then we reply, sure, it's fine with us.
And to Deb's question, there's no payment being associated?
No, 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 not whatsoever, it's a courtesy.
A courtesy, yeah.
Just a common courtesy with the dock owners.
Good way to get into heaven.
Yeah, there you go, here's a question for you, off topic. With cars that are being towed, like say off of Bedwell Bay Road, I noticed Monday's towing a couple of cars, and they put them into the village hall, right? Who pays for that tow? Is it the car owner, or is the village paying for that?
So a little bit on top of that as well, so they are only dropping off at the village hall if it's so busy that they're going and doing repeat pulls, as opposed to just taking to the impound. The ticketed vehicle pays for the tow, and they pay for the ticket.
Okay.
So there's no fee associated with the village whatsoever, it's all revenue for the village.
Okay, okay, thanks.
No problem. Rob Big?
Yeah, thanks, Neil. My question, Peter, is, is there an occasion, I think what was mentioned to myself about the drop-off thing, was that they were dropping people off, that they were actually taking people over to the water ski club, not necessarily equipment. So if somebody showed up at your dock, is there some kind of an understanding that they would automatically be okay to be picked up at your dock if they came across to get them?
No, we never have people come, it's, I believe Sue Brain and Doug are part of the water ski club.
Right.
So, I guess I'm a little foggy on it, but we've never been asked to have people brought back and forth.
No.
It's been a case of unloading, if there, it was, I think it was like a big barbecue or something, and, or they had, I can't quite think, Lisa would be a good one to talk to about that. Never ferrying people back and forth, ever, that I've ever heard.
Essentially, there shouldn't be a problem with parking, because they wouldn't be.
They've never had, the ski club has really never had a complaint. And the dock that the ski club goes off of has never had a complaint. And what they're doing is, when people are coming down, being dropped off, a couple of the dock owners will ferry them to the ski club, because some of these boats from the ski club come from, like say Deep Cove or Keats Park or whatever. So the boats are already at the. say Deep Cove or Keats Park or whatever. So the boat's already at the, at the ski club. So these people that are coming are just getting a ride from the dock owner to the ski club so they can participate in the water skiing.
So it doesn't sound like there's a pile of cars that are being parked there with people being dropped off, as, as was mentioned to myself, could be one more of those rumors that's running around.
Yeah, no, no, no. Like I said, the, the ski club and the dock owners have never had a complaint for parking.
And I'll, I'll, I'll also clarify that the complaints that I've heard about the drop offs are not as far down as you guys are talking. It's, it's closer to the, the West Road entry.
Oh, that's not even near us.
Yeah, that's what I want to, so I didn't want, I didn't want that to sound like it's an issue for the ski club. It was, it's, it's not ski club related, the two complaints that I've heard.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, there's no hands up right now. Any other topics? Any other questions from anybody? John Shulastani?
Thank you. We would love to get involved in any public meetings with the Port of Vancouver regarding group of applications. We appreciate if the village could get us involved in that meeting.
The webinar is on the Thursday of this week and the information's on the website. And there are no other meetings. There are no other public meetings with the port, but the webinar is the first chance to have direct contact with the port.
I don't understand. What I meant was if there was going to be any public meeting with the port with respect to the village.
Yes, there, there won't be. But, but if anything changes, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Nothing? Well, I'll just, I'll add a little bit in case anybody's thinking about hitting the, hitting the hand up bar. The, this isn't the easiest way to have a town hall, obviously, for interaction. So apologies that it's required with COVID, but the hope is that we'll be able to start having in-person meetings, at least lightly spaced as soon as possible. And we'll get back to town halls that allow for a proper level of interaction. But in the meantime, Rob Bigg, put your hand up again, or is that Mary? Oh, you're muted.
Yep, it's Mary. This is just a kind of lightening evening. I know John Snell was saying that nothing seems to work as far as people understanding that they need to bear left rather than going straight through Maine. And I know how much everybody in the village enjoyed our scarecrow. So maybe what we should do is get a life-sized Mayor Belanke.
With a little.
Gonna get shot at.
I'm just thinking if it was something totally ridiculous like that.
That would be ridiculous. That's, that's Ghostbusters, Stay Puft, Marshmallow Man level ridiculous. I, I appreciate the, the thought and, and the scarecrow, one of them still missing their head.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
The headless scarecrow.
We could, we could put the headless scarecrow and try and get people's attention on the, on the Port Moody left side.
Put a no exit sign on the top, where the head goes.
I think, I think if you guys decide to put these in email, Lorna's going to have one of those head shaking days as she reviews her recommendations from residents.
I take it you don't like my idea.
Oh, it's great. I just, the trauma to my kids of me being headless all the time as, or have bullet holes from, from all the angry people would be, I think, disappointing at least to my wife.
I do have one other question, and that is, do you know whether anything has been done with the tree committee report yet as far as a new bylaw?
I don't. And it's, it's an excellent question. I don't know where it sits and I have not, you see me thinking in real time. The, I don't, what I'm guessing is, is whether or not the recent guidance to accelerate the port required OCP amendments will in fact get in the way of the tree committee work being completed and coming back to council as well. I, it wouldn't surprise me if that's the case because this, this OCP restriction is blocking so many people from being able to, to finally get a chance to apply for their docks. I, I asked for, I asked for it to become a priority and that may have negatively influenced the tree committee's report.
Okay, just wondered if maybe it was going on and I didn't know.
I know they're working on the background. Staff is, is overworked and unfortunately just not enough gets done. Bruce, I see your hand up. Have you got a comment on this?
Yeah, just, no, just on the point that staff being overworked and, and Mary, I appreciate your question. I, of course, am very interested in, in getting staff support for the water committee's work. And I've been harassing Lorna in that regard. And, you know, she makes it very clear that just isn't any spare time right now. There are often juggling priorities. And I agree with Neil, the priority at the moment is undoubtedly helping those who want to make applications to the port.
Oh, I can understand. That's a big priority right now.
You know, we'll, we'll find that I would expect by the next, next council meeting, we'll have a, a confirmed timeline, or at least order of priority after the, after the OCP amendment requirements as to where the trees will fall in. It's a good question.
Thank you.
Deborah?
I have a suggestion for Main Avenue. And Bruce and Diana do those beautiful bowls with messages. They could put a bowl there with some sort of message and point of no return this way, go home that way. So, yeah.
We did, we did, there's got to be a way of making that clear. I mean, there's got to be, I was thinking of painting an arrow on the road, but I'm sure we'd be violating some provincial provision.
I've got it. What about, what about making Main Ave a toll road? If we put, if we put a toll sign on the Main Ave, I guarantee you, everybody's going down Bedwell Bay Road.
How about just toll to do with coming into Belkara period so that keep people out, right?
I don't know if everybody's aware of the, of the research that you just uncovered that many years ago, like maybe three decades ago, Belkara's council passed a bylaw to gate Belkara. And in, when, when trying to gate Belkara, it was shot down and overruled by Metro Vancouver.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
And so there is a history of the bylaw actually being passed to gate Belkara. Of course, Belkara didn't have the weight back then to, to push it through, but the council wanted it. But that, that's not the first time that it's been brought up literally by council.
Yeah, that was, yeah, because all of that preceded the Tomtumayatan, right? And then the challenges, of course, we face subsequently, which is just straight population growth, you know? And it's, as Rob says, it's not going to go away.
All right, Peter? You're back, Peter, but you're muted. Peter, are you in?
I didn't click.
There, oh, you didn't? Okay, your hand was up. I, I just, I put your hand down, no problem. We're back.
Just shaking my head, that's all, you know?
All right, no worries. We're back to John Shulastani.
Thank you so much. I would, I would like to seek permission to share my screen regarding, regarding a concern that I have. And I'm really appreciative of the community collaborating with the issue of Mr. Johnston on Main Avenue and, and providing feedback. I appreciate if, I would like to share my screen and with, with only a couple of seconds explanation, they can maybe provide a feedback with respect to our solution. Maybe a solution can be found and, 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 and our issue maybe can, can, can be resolved.
John, I can't overstate that the, the challenge you're having with your dock is not something that we're equipped to solve here. It's not a brainstorming thing about putting up signs. It's, it's a legal issue. None of us are lawyers for the village on this. This, this isn't something that we're going to be able to solve here. I'm sorry.
Sorry, maybe I was, my question was that, okay, maybe I can explain it. May I allow to share my screen?
I don't think it's allowed. I, I didn't set this up. It was set up by staff. And with all the screen bombings that are so famous on Zoom, I believe they disabled screen sharing.
Sure. Maybe I can quickly explain. And, and, and I appreciate the public's comment on that. Our immediate neighbor, former mayor of Belkara, has, has situated their dock in a, in a way that's occupying two Guru Wafich areas fronting our property and his property. So you can assume it's a, it's a tilted shared dock. So if, if anyone can provide any solution, they can directly maybe contact us or the village to see how we can resolve the issue. So, so us as upland owners, the entire Wafich is fronting our property. There is not a single thing in front of their property, but the water lot occupies the entire area. What we are not getting, behind being accessed to that Wafich in front of our property. So we appreciate any feedback from the public that they can help us in resolve the issue. That's what we can discuss now. Otherwise, we are, we are very open to receive suggestions and we are very inresonable in resolving this issue.
Reasonable request. If anybody has any comments? All right. Well, it's noted and we, we can tell how much this is an issue for you guys. And as I say, I, I can't understand how it happened either. I'll do my best to support you as you continue your conversations with the village. And as I said, as I expect with the port as well. I don't see any other hands up. Are there any other? Oh, David Shulastani. There you go.
I have a quick question. Is it possible we still have a grandfather steps down to the water that were taken out by, by the previous mayor? I was wondering if we were able to use that access to the water.
I think there's litigation underway in that, and so we can't even talk about it.
I see. But there's, where they go scuba diving, there's, that's also space to go down to the water. I'm just wondering what the difference between the two was.
Whiskey Cove, I believe, is a, I don't know if it's designated as a park, Bruce. If it's Metro Vancouver land, it's not, it's, it's, it's completely different than a, than an HEA zone.
Yeah, I think that, I think that sliver is metro, but if Carolina's on, she may know.
Yes, it is Metro Vancouver. It's part of Metro Parks and they are the ones that do all the maintenance there. And, and just to your point earlier, Bruce, no, they have never been a problem. I don't know them personally, but I usually see the same group of like seven, maybe 10 cars of, of, of guys coming to, to do the scuba diving here. There's also a coral that is close by. That's why that's the best access for it. But they have never been a problem. They don't leave garbage behind. They are always parked illegally. And yeah, so they've been good.
Yeah, and my, just to finish up, what I was saying is that, and so there's, are people allowed to rock climb down any location along any of the Marine Avenue or no?
That's, that's village owned property. So my, my understanding is that that is not intended to be water access.
Okay. So there's no rock climbing in any locations?
Or base jumping.
Or base jumping. Perfect. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Anybody? Any other topics? Where are the hot buttons that people haven't, 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 haven't brought up yet? John, you're up again. John Shulastani?
Thank you so much. I, I'm, I'm, I was just thinking about your suggestion. Then I wondered if you are directing us to court to resolve our issue because the understanding is that if the, if the village could resolve the issue, there is no need to go to court.
That's the way it should be done. I'm not directing you anyway.
So my, so my understanding was that we could resolve the issue if we could get your worship involved.
I can't, I mean, I'm, I'm saying the same thing. We'd have to go over the recording, I think, at least three, if not four times. This isn't the forum. Copy me on the emails to Lorna. I'm happy to support you. And I really shouldn't have to say that again. Please just listen to my, my responses so no one has to listen to that again.
Sure. I would greatly appreciate that. And with respect to the, with respect to the access to water on the, along Marine Avenue to stairs, understand that there are other, many locations along Marine Avenue that people walk down the, either stairs or they have created their own pathways. None of them has been blocked by the village. Can we create an, an access to the water?
There are two, two designated act water access to the village, not lots. I believe just two of them. And those are public access areas. Yes.
Yes, I understand about those two locations. What I meant was that each resident have their own water access. For example, our neighbor mayor has it, its neighbor, its neighbor has it. And many other areas, they have created with stones and woods and other sorts of materials, they have created access to water beside their, their, their Waf access. So they have two accesses, one to Waf, one to stairs. We got nothing. So I wondered if we could apply to get, to get an access to water based on policy 137.
I'm not aware of, of how private property or access to Waf is being managed. As I said, when it's access to the water, there are two public paths and everything else is, I understand, village property that is not intended to be a public access point.
No, I understand that everyone's grandfather, ours was grandfather and it was destroyed by the, by the last mayor. But I wondered if we could create another access similar to our, similar to the mayor and its neighbor and others who are accessing the water to stairs.
Isn't, I feel like I'm having deja vu. Don't we have a legal issue that would, that prohibits us from being able to talk about this? I, I feel like.
No, I'm talking about a new, a new staircase that is, basically, maybe I can clarify. The issue with the court is regarding the, basically, well, I'm not going to discuss what the issue actually is, but it's related to the personally, how the former mayor handled the situation. That's totally separate from what we are asking. What I'm asking is that can we create a pathway from Marine Avenue to the, to, to the water, similar to our, to our neighbor, to its neighbor and to its neighbor and to its neighbor and to its neighbor, similar to other neighbors who have a dock and have a pathway to water, using public access without having high bank protection again.
I think you would have to convince council that another public access route is required where there are already at least two on, on Marine Ave.
So we would like to make an application under policy 137 to create an access similar to our neighbor and its neighbor.
You know, this isn't the place for that, right? You can't, you can't do that here. So you, you want to contact each of the different council members and, and be able to plead your case, or you can do it in a council meeting. But there's no, there's no submission venue for you here.
Sure. Now, what I wanted to know, whether your worship had any knowledge about how we can go ahead about creating that path similar to others.
As I just described, in a council meeting, you can bring it up or you can talk to council members for them to submit it themselves directly.
Thank you.
Ben? Ben, going once, going twice. Ben? We can hear you. Not very well, Ben. This is a very bad microphone you're using.
Hello, can you hear me now?
No. Can you just use one of your family's mics? Hello? Hello? Okay, Ben, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on hold and we'll, we'll come back to you. David Goodman?
Thank you, Neil. I think you've shown incredible patience here with an individual concern. And it's really of no interest to many of us that are in this town hall. And I, although you threatened to cut people off, I think maybe you should if it becomes a single issue rather than much more global issue of interest to the, to the village itself. So yes, you, you've shown incredible patience, but maybe enough is enough. I'm going to leave the meeting if these guys come on again. And I would suggest that maybe everybody else should do the same.
I, I have cut them off, just so you know. And the only time that we continue to have the, the forum is when nobody else has their hand up and there's no one else who has anything else they'd like to discuss. And there's no hands up now again. So there's no one, any hot button issues, hate mail, no, no questions coming out of my mail out to residents, which had all the data that was generated by the water committee, the water engineer, the SLSM volunteer fire department, the financial information, no questions coming out of my letter. All right, John, you know, you're chasing people away from this. Go ahead, John Shulastani. You're chasing people away from this forum.
Hello?
Yes?
Thank you. This is Ben. Neil, Mayor Belanke?
Thank you. This is Ben Neil Merbelanki. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you this time. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. My question is about policy 137.
I don't know, I don't know what that policy is, and I.
Is there anybody on council is aware of policy 137 by the village?
I bet you no one knows what policy 137 is off the top of their head.
I'm very surprised. Bruce, I believe Bruce Derek knows. He was.
Surprisingly, I can't recall.
I can, I can.
Off the top of my.
Maybe I can refresh the council's memory. Policy 137 is the policy used to grant basically access for the, to, to grant highway encroachment agreement to the people who have a staircase in front of them, but they don't have a highway encroachment agreement already. Does that ring a bell for anyone? Or can I, can I go further? Okay, so policy 137 was used by, for example, by the owner of 4116 Marine Avenue to get highway encroachment agreement for their, their staircase fronting their property, which, which is, which is surprisingly was not, although the policy was provided to us by the village when we requested it, it was not applied when we requested highway encroachment agreement for the staircase that was in place for over 50 years. And we have all the documentation, there's evidence.
John, I've just muted you for a second. You know what? We've talked about the fact that there's a legal outstanding issue on this. It's, we're not gonna discuss this, not as long as there is a legal issue. And no matter how many times you bring it up, you're forcing me each time to mute you if you wanna talk about something that is before the courts.
My question is only about policy 137, which is, is of public interest.
Then you have to stick to your question and don't talk about, don't talk about the highway encroachment area in front of you.
Okay, so in general, somebody who has a staircase in front of their property that has been there for many years, for 10 years, 20 years or 50 years, how does, how can that resident apply under policy 137? Or this is, this is what I know as a precedent. But there are, there could be other policies as well, which could help the resident to apply to get a highway encroachment agreement so that they can basically continue their use. So the question is, if people, there are people who have, who are in Belkara, who are on daily, you're using their staircase access to the water on a daily basis. And then they want to apply to make that basically recognized by the village as a highway encroachment agreement, which is, which I believe is the case for other, other staircases and other docks and wharfages. How can that resident apply?
Straight to staff, just like the, the other advice I've given you thus far.
I, I, I thank you for, for your directions, for, for basically applying to the staff. But what is the recourse if the staff, if you get, if you get no answer from the staff?
For, I think the fourth time again, this is, this is crazy. Copy me on the emails and we'll discuss it outside of this forum.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I really encourage you not to bring that up again. I can't say it strong enough. Jim Chisholm or Sherry? You're muted, Sherry. You're still muted, Sherry.
Okay, I'm out of about now.
You gotcha. Go ahead.
Listen, to the Shulastani family, you, you've had a pretty good kick at the thing tonight. It's really time to drop this. You're just alienating everyone. The stairs to the beach are no longer allowed. They were in the past, but they're no longer allowed by the Port of Vancouver. And the stairs that you're seeing at your neighbors are on a private water lot lease that has been grandfathered. Today, when you build a dock, you can't build those stairs to the beach. And there's no way to fight that. So I would just try and stay in good grace with the, the council and the mayor at this point and, and, and deal with this at a council meeting or through letters. Because you're not getting anywhere fast.
Thank you for your comment, Sherry. I appreciate that. But just to correct you, the staircase was not leading to the beach. It was coming down on a stone wall platform on the foreshore, which actually has no.
We're back on this staircase that's in legal conversation. John, you can't talk about this anymore, even if Sherry's bringing up, bringing it up to give you advice. You can't talk about this anymore. Okay? It is, it is before the courts and you've been advised of this, not just by me, but just by everybody under the sun. So I'm at the end of my, I'm at the end of my rope for you in, in breaking your lawyers and our lawyers' advice. Are there any?
Thank you so much for the opportunity, Your Honor. I greatly appreciate it for everything you did today.
Any other comments or questions from anybody? I don't see any other hands. No?
Neil?
Yeah, John Wilmes.
Last night's, last night's meeting, there was a little blurb about the lights. I'm gonna change the subject here for you.
Great. Much appreciated.
The, there were, I'm not sure if anybody knows what's going on with these lights, but I think there is a deal coming up with BC Hydro to give us some lights at every bus stop and, and mailbox. But it sounded like to me, and I, I was under the assumption that this had been applied for months ago. But last night, when somebody asked the question, I think it was Deborah, we haven't even applied for these lights yet. Can you comment on something?
I learned something last night as well about the state of the application. I, I had heard that it was approved. When I hear something's approved, I assume that the process has been completed. I learned last night that I guess some of the process hasn't yet been completed. And I'm hopeful that it will be done quickly. It might've been Sherry who brought this up. But I, I'm hopeful that it, it will be done quickly. To your point that the work, the hard, heavy lifting and the approvals have already been done. I would hope that the administration side of it can be done as quickly as possible to follow that up.
Thank you.
You guys, you got, you and your, your son were instrumental in helping this to come together. And you saved the village a ton of money and it's a huge safety benefit. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, guys, that was a unique experience. And I'm pretty sure that we are all going to be happy that this one is done. And we'll do our best to try to ensure that we have a, a very productive and open meeting again next time in a even better forum. So thank you for attending. Have a wonderful night. Stay safe and look forward to seeing y'all again soon.
Thanks, Neil.
It's past my bedtime.
You should be sleepy now.
I go, I get up at 2:30 in the morning.
Then you definitely need to go to sleep. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bye-bye.